Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, January 19th, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti-Grohl-Hahn-Labange-Ludlow-Missakowski-Parks-Perry-Reyes-Smith-Viragos of Weiss-Land-Pedea, ten members present and accorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Missakowski for a special presentation today.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, this would have been done on a normal Friday in terms of presenting resolutions, but like the storm caught many of us off guard, it captured our fine Lieutenant Kirk as well in terms of her home, so she wasn't able to be here. And, members, I know you're all going to be as shocked as I am when I'm telling you that the sad thing today is we're here to present her a resolution for her retirement after 20 years as an LAPD officer. It doesn't really seem possible, it doesn't look possible, but Lieutenant Kirk has been well-known to us. She actually is almost a local girl, although she was born in Miami, Florida. She moved to California, Los Angeles, at a very young age. Attended elementary school at City Terrace Elementary School, Elsa Marino Middle School, and Wilson High School. So she's definitely LA as a person who's taken this place as her own. She joined LAPD in 1984 and began at Devonshire Patrol, Pacific, and Foothill. I was telling Councilmember Labange that Lieutenant Kirk has an interesting connection to LAPD and city council history. Lieutenant Kirk was the officer in charge to respond, I believe in 1987, to the house of then-council candidate Ruth Galanter after she had been brutally attacked. And Lieutenant Kirk was the one there who helped provide CPR, provide the kind of resuscitation that saved council candidate Ruth Galanter's life, and for that, she was awarded the Police Star. She moved up quickly in the ranks of LAPD, promoting to Police Officer III, assigned to DARE at Foothill, then the detective in sex crimes and domestic violence at Devonshire. Sergeant, she was promoted to at Northeast and North Hollywood, part of Internal Affairs Group. Finally, made lieutenant rank, assigned to Northeast, and then was assigned to where we have known her really well, the Police Commission Investigation Group. She has been the officer in charge of Police Commission Investigation, and although that handles a variety of diverse functions, including the Commission Enforcement Section, the investigation, police permits, it also does official police garage, and she helped complete the official police garage awards with one or two that had a little bit of controversy, but we completed them all. That position also is the place where when LA City Council says, "We want laws changed, we want new rules to apply, we want to change how LAPD does something and adopt a policy or law," the Commission Investigation Division is the one to whom is assigned to work with the council, to work with the communities, to change the things we need to change. There, she has played a significant role in amending a number of city ordinances, including the cyber café ordinance, the adult entertainment ordinance, and the one which I think we've spent a lot of time on, and I know she spent a lot of time on, and that's the burglar alarm ordinance. Through her work on the false alarm issues, the police response issues relative to alarms, Lieutenant Kirk has become a nationally-recognized expert, because what we went through in this city, police departments throughout the country are going through in trying to figure out how to deal with false alarms, how to deal with the use of police resources. So she has been, as I say, now nationally-recognized for all the work that she did helping us through that, and hopefully will be able to help others in the future. She's also reached some significant personal milestones, well with LAPD, where she met and married her husband Bobby, who is also an officer in the department. She celebrated the birth of her son Justin and daughter Megan, and shared the joy of parenting her two stepsons, Bryce and Ryan. She also managed during all of that, while she wasn't so busy here to get her bachelor's degree, so she's been well-prepared, well-equipped to do not only our work, but really be an incredible representative, not only here, she sits on that front table to talk to us, but talking to the members of the community and also the commission on a regular basis. She is really recognized, and I think you see it today by the people who are here to support her, her fan club. She's got incredible communication skills, sharp intellect, tenacity, a deep concern, but I think more than that, a humility and an ability to listen that has really helped serve her well, serve LAPD well, and the city well. I know she's got many great horizons ahead, and I'm just very, very pleased that she spent as much time as she did here with us at LAPD, helping us through some very, very thorny issues, and I wish her, and I know the council does, wish her many, many great years ahead. So Deborah, congratulations on an incredible career, thank you for your service to the city of LA, and it's a great pleasure that we present this in honor of your retirement.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Cindy, for bringing Deborah forward. Lieutenant Kirk, Deborah, I just want to thank you. My staff wanted to make sure that we relay to you a heartfelt thanks during the alarm issue, as complicated as it was. You're very responsive, very courteous, very professional.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, January 19th, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti, Gruelhan, Labange, Ledlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vieira, Gosa, Weiss, Lain, Padilla, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Misakowski for a special presentation today.
Deborah?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, this would have been done on a normal Friday in terms of presenting resolutions, but like the storm caught many of us off guard, it captured our fine Lieutenant Kirk as well in terms of her home, so she wasn't able to be here. And members, I know you're all going to be as shocked as I am when I'm telling you that the sad thing today is we're here to present her a resolution for her retirement after 20 years as an LAPD officer. It doesn't really seem possible, it doesn't look possible, but Lieutenant Kirk has been well-known to us. She actually is almost a local girl, although she was born in Miami, Florida. She moved to California, Los Angeles, at a very young age. Attended elementary school at City Terrace Elementary School, Elsa Marino Middle School, and Wilson High School. So she's definitely LA as a person who's taken this place as her own. She joined LAPD in 1984 and began at Devonshire and Patrol, Pacific, and Foothill. I was telling Councilmember Labange that Lieutenant Kirk has an interesting connection to LAPD and city council history. Lieutenant Kirk was the officer in charge to respond, I believe in 1987, to the house of then-council candidate Ruth Galanter after she had been brutally attacked. And Lieutenant Kirk was the one there who helped provide CPR, provide the kind of resuscitation that saved council candidate Ruth Galanter's life, and for that, she was awarded the Police Star. She moved up quickly in the ranks of LAPD, promoting to Police Officer III, assigned to DARE at Foothill, then the detective in sex crimes and domestic violence at Devonshire. Sergeant she was promoted to at Northeast and North Hollywood, part of Internal Affairs Group. Finally made lieutenant rank, assigned to Northeast, and then was assigned to, where we have known her really well, the Police Commission Investigation Group. She has been the officer in charge of Police Commission Investigation, and although that handles a variety of diverse functions, including the Commission Enforcement Section, the investigation, police permits, it also does official police garage, and she helped complete the official police garage awards, with one or two that had a little bit of controversy, but we completed them all. That position also is the place where when LA City Council says, "We want laws changed, we want new rules to apply, we want to change how LAPD does something and adopt a policy or law," the Commission Investigation Division is the one to whom is assigned to work with the council, to work with the communities, to change the things we need to change. There she has played a significant role in amending a number of city ordinances, including the cyber café ordinance, the adult entertainment ordinance, and the one which I think we spent a lot of time on, and I know she spent a lot of time on, and that's the burglar alarm ordinance. Through her work on the false alarm issues, the police response issues relative to alarms, Lieutenant Kirk has become a nationally-recognized expert, because what we went through in this city, police departments throughout the country are going through in trying to figure out how to deal with false alarms, how to deal with the use of police resources. So she has been, as I say, now nationally-recognized for all the work that she did helping us through that, and hopefully will be able to help others in the future. She's also reached some significant personal milestones, well with LAPD, where she met and married her husband Bobby, who is also an officer in the department. She celebrated the birth of her son Justin and daughter Megan, and shared the joy of parenting her two stepsons, Bryce and Ryan. She also managed during all of that, while she wasn't so busy here to get her bachelor's degree. So she's been well-prepared, well-equipped to do not only our work, but really be an incredible representative, not only here, she sits on that front table to talk to us, but talking to the members of the community and also the commission on a regular basis. She is really recognized, and I think you see it today by the people who are here to support her, her fan club. She's got incredible communication skills, sharp intellect, tenacity, a deep concern, but I think more than that, a humility and an ability to listen that has really helped serve her well, serve LAPD well, and the city well. I know she's got many great horizons ahead, and I'm just very, very pleased that she spent as much time as she did here with us at LAPD, helping us through some very, very thorny issues. And I wish her, and I know the council does, wish her many, many great, great years ahead. So Deborah, congratulations on an incredible career. Thank you for your service to the city of LA, and it's a great pleasure that we present this in honor of your retirement.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Cindy, for bringing Deborah forward. Lieutenant Kirk, Deborah, I just want to thank you. My staff wanted to make sure that we relay to you a heartfelt thanks during the alarm issue, as complicated as it was. You're very responsive, very courteous, very professional, laid the information out as it should have been, and appreciate all your assistance and for everything you've done for the city. Congratulations, and it feels awkward telling you to enjoy your golden years, but enjoy them.
Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, Lieutenant Kirk, thank you and your family for your service. One thing I'll recall is about you are absolutely straightforward, and every time I ask a question of you on issues related to the police and the police commission, so you really were credit to your assignment. I only wish this was 40 years instead of 20 years, because you truly are an outstanding public employee and a credit to the Los Angeles Police Department. Congratulations, and when's the motor man going to get off his bike? Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the recognition. I want to thank all of you in the council for being supportive. Even when you didn't always like the message, you're always kind to the messenger, so thank you for that. I'd like to acknowledge a couple of key staffers who, without whose help, I don't think I could have been as successful in my job. Adina Tesler from Councilwoman Misakowski's office really has been an incredible asset to me and to CID and a lot of the policy issues that we faced, and Brian Perry from Councilmember Dennis Stein's office, just a stellar employee and a good friend and a good team member. So thank you very much. I don't know what the next 20 years of my life will hold, but I'm looking forward to seeing what it is. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Cardenas moves. Mr. Labange seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves, and Ms. Perry seconds.
Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
And the council calls forward at this time, Valinda Wright, followed by Charles Griffin. This is a general public comment, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items within our jurisdiction but not on today's agenda. Ms. Wright.
Hi. Valinda Wright, it's amazing the lengths individuals will go to for the American dream or work visa or green card. Thirty thousand dollars to tow away enclosed in a cargo container at sea for two weeks while newsworthy is only the candle that illuminates the cake. One's vision can become clouded when in residence with individuals who have the lowest common denominator of the city's beautiful eclectic cross-culturally diverse populace on speed dial. But the heart of an Angeleno is singularly unique. We possess an indomitable spirit. I tell anyone enlightened enough to comprehend that Tom Bradley is how we won the West. Thank you. By the way, Councilman Vieira Gosa, my mom's neighbor, Sue Baby wants one of your signs. We got five of Councilmen Parks, but Sue Baby wants one of yours. Where can I get one of your signs at?
Thank you.
One of your yard signs.
Thank you very much. Mr. Griffin.
My name is Charles Griffin, and I came up to you from the city of Newport Beach this morning, but I am a native son born at the corner of Third and Grand and St. Vincent's 75 years ago. And I come to you because I'm intensely proud of my hometown and the city council for offering to come forward to sponsor and provide international service at the closed Marine Corps Air Station El Toro. I, as a native son, grew up in Los Angeles, went to UCLA on a Douglas Scholarship through engineering. In 45 years, developed airplanes, worked and developed Lockheed Constellation, Lockheed Electra, the Hughes air-to-air missile, the Falcon, the Douglas surface-to-air missile, the Douglas Navy Interceptor F-4D, the Attack A-4D, the DC-7, the DC-8, the DC-9, the DC-10, the MD-80, the C-17. On the DC-10, I did the automatic landing design and development. And why I mention that is that, and also, on the B-2 stealth bomber, I did the landing system for utilizing global positioning system. I mention that because I come to you as an expert, telling you that any argument against an airport at El Toro is without merit, that you can with confidence support a new airport at El Toro utilizing commercial aircraft. However, and this is what I come to emphasize, is that you must, at the very outset, specify how you're going to operate at that airport. The county proposed an unrealistic operation utilizing the military airspace that existed for the Marines. That is not compatible with commercial operations there. We have 100,000 acres stretching from the Chino State Park, the notorious Prado floodplain, the Cleveland National Forest, all the way to the ocean across the county, a three-mile, four-mile-wide corridor of a nature preserve that goes to the Crystal Coast State Park at Moro Cove, El Moro Cove. So it is absolutely imperative that you're going to, at the very beginning, mention that you specify that you are going to utilize this open space and not fly over the communities of Elise Oviedo and Leisure World and Laguna Woods, Laguna Hills, and cut the city of Lake Forest in half. You need to say right out front that you are not going to utilize the east-west oriented runways that are not supported by wind. The utilization of those runways were based on erroneous wind data measured by the Navy over the 50 years that they had it with a non-standard wind sensor only nine feet off the ground, indicating that the winds were only, were 30% lower than what they actually are. So that east-west runway is the offensive runway that is intimidating the southern cities. You need to say right out, you're going to use that runway at least for concourse and gates for the passenger terminal holding pattern, secure away from the parking areas as you have planned for LAX. So let me say, please emphasize right now so that you cannot be opposed by people that have a false idea of how this airport would operate. Thank you very much for your attention and my yelling at you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for making the drive from Orange County. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
First items for council's consideration, items noted for public hearing. Items 1 through 6 are confirmation of building and safety assessments.
Okay, members, items 1 through 6 now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Members wishing to call specials, Mr. Reyes.
Mr. President, can we hold number one on the desk, please?
Sure, let's hold item one on the desk. Anybody wishing to call items 2 through 5 special? Seeing none, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, items for which public hearings have been held, 7 through 15, and there is a request on item number seven. The applicant requests a continuance to February 23rd.
Okay, members, any objection to continuing item number seven? Seeing none, item seven is continued. We have items 8 through 15 still before us. Public hearings have been held in committee on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Seeing no such motions, do we have any requests for specials on 8 through 15? If there are no specials, then let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. Before proceeding to the next item, members without objection, I'd like to reconsider item number three. We had a public speaker card submitted right as we were taking the vote on that item. Let's open the roll, reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
An aye.
Okay, item three is back before us. Let's call it special for the time being, and we will have a speaker card on that. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, 16 through 30. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there is a report on item number 25, a city attorney and DWP to report.
Okay, members without objection, items 16 through 30 are before us today. I do have a card on item 26 and a card on item 27. We'll call those special. On items 16 through 30, on the balance of the items, members, they do not have speaker cards, so the public hearings are open and closed. Request for specials, Mr. Cardenas.
Item, can we put over item number 25 for 30 days?
Request to continue item 25. Any objection? Seeing none, item 25 is continued. That new hearing date will be February 18th.
I'm sorry, can you hold that on the desk, please? Item 25, sorry.
Reconsider and call special by Mr. Cardenas. Any other specials on these items, 16 through 30? Seeing none, let's open the roll on the balance of the items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Items 16 through 22 are ordinances, and those do carry over for a second reading. And I believe items 31, 32, and 33 are closed-session items. We'll hold those on the desk. And Madam Clerk, is that the end of our agenda?
Yes, it is, and that would take council back to the items called special.
Okay. Beginning with item number one, Mr. Reyes.
I'm waiting for some information. We can hold that towards the end of the meeting?
Okay.
Then I can decide whether we continue it for two weeks.
Okay. Let's move on then to item number three. The council calls forward Ms. Irma Martinez on item number three. Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm sorry I came late. I just want to, I'm Irma Martinez. This is regarding the case of 14655 An Owen Street. It says that I have to pay 855, and I think we already closed this case and we complied with, what's this, with the notice of compliance by the City of Building and Safety. So I just want to know, why do I still have to pay despite the fact that we complied? And the city, what is it, the supervisor or the one in charge, the City of Building and Safety said that when I complied, I called them, and they said, "Okay, because you comply, then we will close the case." And I was just wondering, it took me a year before I had to pay 855.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Cardenas on this item?
Yes, I'd like to ask that we put item three over for a week.
Okay.
So we get more clarity on it.
Seeing none, and let's continue this item for a week without objection. And Madam, Mr. Cardenas's office will be in contact with you.
Yes, basically, we're putting it off for a week. We're putting this over for a week, so we'll have time to discuss it with the department, okay?
All right, so, thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you for being here. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 26, and that was called special for a card from the public.
Let's have a joint public hearing on items 26 and 27, and hear from Valinda Wright. Valinda Wright?
I made the comment that in case there wasn't time for a public comment.
Okay. Then this closes public comment for both items 26 and 27. Members of the council wishing to be heard on either of these items? Seeing none, let's open the roll on both of those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Items 1 and 25 are still on the desk, Mr. President, and also the closed sessions.
Mr. Cardenas, are we ready with item 25? Or Mr. Reyes on item number one? If not, we can wait until we come back. We can wait till after closed session if you need more time.
On item 25, we'd just like to leave it on the calendar as is, along with the rest of the items. No special.
Moving approval, as is before us. Any further discussion, item 25? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. And Mr. Reyes, if we're ready for item number one, we can take that now, or we can wait till after the closed session.
Let's just continue it for two weeks.
Okay. Any objection, members, to continuing this for two weeks? This is item number one. The new date would be February 2nd. Seeing no objection, item one is continued. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, we wish to clear the desk before going into closed session.
Let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Friday, February 18th to arrive at 10:45, Wednesday, June 1st, and Tuesday, January 25th, and those are all for city business, June 1st is for personal business, and they meet council policy.
Mr. Garcetti is excused.
Council President Padilla requests to be excused Friday, February 8th for city business that meets council policy.
Excuse is granted.
Councilmember Vieira Gosa requests to be excused Wednesday, February 9th for personal business that meets council policy.
Mr. Vieira Gosa is excused.
And Councilmember Gruel requests to be excused Friday, excuse me, January 21st to leave at noon for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Labange moves. Ms. Gruel is excused.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Okay. If there's nothing further at this time, in conformance with California, a lot of the council will now adjourn to closed session. Sardines, please go to the chambers. Madam Clerk, next item before us, please.
The city attorney has a report to the public on item number 32.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. In closed session, on item number 32, council voted 10-0 to direct the city attorney's office to seek to de-publish the opinion.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
There is a special one before council, and it has been distributed, and the mover is Councilmember Han, and she will speak to the findings on that.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm bringing in a Rule 23 motion to assert our jurisdiction over a January 10th Board of Airport Commissioners meeting where they awarded a one-year contract. Fortunately, today's the last day to act, which is why I'm making it a Rule 23. I don't like to do this, so I don't have to, but we only have five days to assert our jurisdiction, so today's the last day we can do it, and that's why I'm doing it. Tony, as Chair of Commerce, and I talked about this, and we did feel like there was enough questions about how this contract was awarded that we wanted to air it out. It's all we wanted to do in commerce, ask some questions, get some answers. You know how we are trying to be so diligent about these contracts? So that's why I'm doing it. I don't think the city attorney is going to give me anything on the findings, but the reason I'm doing it is because it's the last day to act, and this information just came to me that it was worth airing out, so that's why I'm doing it.
Ms. Misakowski on the findings?
Well, I'm opposed to the introduction of this as a Rule 23. I can say it on the findings, but also on the merits. If the purpose is to get airing out of Manchester Square relocation, we can bring in a motion and ask the Airport Commission to discuss it. As I understand, this one, the contract has been awarded to a new company, different from the company that had it, and the company that had it said, "We don't like that decision." Is there more to it? These are relatively small contractors, these are not big construction projects, but I can tell you that the Manchester Square relocation program had been not being well-handled at the airport. So as they brought in both a new executive manager at the airport to handle it, and as they are looking at contracts in the past and may have chosen a different one, I'm comfortable with that. So I don't believe that this rises to the level of need to review nor making the findings, and so I'm going to oppose it.
Anybody else wishing to be heard on the findings? Let's open the roll on the findings. Close the roll on the findings. Tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, three nays.
Okay, that fails. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. Colleagues, do we have any announcements today? Announcements? Seeing none. Do we have any adjourning tributes today? Please rise for adjourning motions. Oh, and Mr. Reyes, I'm sorry.
Item number one, if I may, have it reconsidered just for one week instead of two.
Okay. Let's open the roll, reconsideration of item number one, which has previously been continued for two weeks. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, back before us, and without objection, continue for one week. Okay, back before us, and without objection, continue for one week. That'd be January 26th. Adjourning tributes? Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I would like us to adjourn our meeting today in memory of Gilbert Enriquez, who passed away just Friday at the age of 65. He was born in Mexico, and he was a 52-year resident of the South Bay, and he worked as a machinist in the aerospace industry for 25 years. He survived by his wife Maria, his daughter Veronica, his sons Robert and Rick, as well as several brothers and sisters, and his granddaughter, Melissa Navarro. She's the one that brought this to my attention. She's the secretary for the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce. He will be greatly missed.
Mr. Labange.
Yes, members, I'd like to ask we adjourn in memory of Harold Ginsler, who was a great resident of Las Feliz, lived to be 88 years old. He was a former city employee in our old Bureau of Public Buildings. For many years, he worked, and he survived by his lovely wife Thelma. They, as a couple, were hikers in Griffith Park, and every morning, both of them would walk up to Mount Hollywood and have great joy. He was stricken by Alzheimer's recently, but Thelma still powered on and continued to care for him, and he relocated into a Silver Lake convalescent home where he passed. Harold Ginsler was a great citizen of Los Angeles. I ask that we adjourn in his memory. Harold Ginsler.
Other tributes? Mr. Vieira Gosa.
Yes, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Gloria Rodriguez Grego. For many years, Gloria Grego was a stay-at-home mother, taking care of her husband and her children. When her husband became ill, she had to go to work to sustain the entire family. She took a job at a factory, later becoming a union shop steward there, and she died last night while undergoing heart surgery. She was 69 years old, living in the city of Commerce. She's left behind seven children and 13 grandchildren. Her children are Victor, Tom, a member of our city family, a city attorney, Nick, Gavi, Tim, Mary Ann, and Chris. She'll be sorely missed. Our deepest sympathies out to our friend Victor and Tom Grego and the entire Grego family.
All members. All members. Mr. Reyes.
Yes, I just want to also add my condolences to the family. Tom Grego was the individual who introduced me to politics, brought me forward and to participate in a race in CD1 back in the late 80s or 90s, and the whole Phantom family of Cathedral High School also stand and give our condolences to the Grego family.
Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.